Also, Paul, give your request for the last year and the payment schedule. He said they missed the part of the payments. They're not going to settle for what they're supposed to.
Chairman, Lord, please, this, uh, Monday, June 18th, 2012, Station of California National United States. Kyle Rowe.
Ian Peter.
Here.
Ead Richard.
Present.
Ron Simon.
Here.
Nancy Brandt.
Here.
Joel Street.
Present.
Richard Wiers.
Here.
Ronnie Kier.
Here.
Harry Sees.
Present.
Charles Mann.
Present.
Johnson Taster.
Present.
Steve Ray.
Present.
Tom Bowden.
Here.
Ryan Lichtenstein.
Present.
Charlie Van.
Here.
Nicky Renfro.
Present.
Ian Arden.
Here.
Steve Cheney.
Here.
John Lewis.
Here.
Sonya Cole.
Present.
Russell Cott.
Here.
Scott Sam.
Here.
Bill Armstrong.
Here.
Pat Pitt.
Present.
Robert Goff.
Here.
Stuck in that group. Uh, we'll now have our open prayer about Reverend Trele, please stand.
The Bible says in First Timothy, Chapter two, "First of all, then I urge that in treaties and prayers and petitions and thanksgivings be made on behalf of all men for kings and all who are in authority, in order that we may lead a tranquil and quiet life in all godliness and dignity." Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, who come before you this evening, first of all, Lord, to acknowledge our need for you. I believe, Lord, you're the Creator, and giver, and sustainer of all life, and we're thankful for that tonight. I'm thankful for the opportunity and the privilege and the responsibility to share in this meeting in a word of prayer. Father, I thank you for all those who are gathered here tonight, and I pray especially, heavenly Father, for this commission, for these men, these women who lead us. I pray, Lord, that you will give them wisdom to know what is right and the strength and courage to do it. I pray that through their leadership, our society would be indeed marked by tranquility and godliness and dignity. I pray, Father, that those of us who stand outside of this commission and look to them will pray for them, encourage them, and support them. I pray that, Father, all of our attitudes will be marked by humility and godliness, Father. I pray that there will be more people like this elected to this commission in future days, and I pray that they will all look to you as their source of strength and guidance. I thank you again, Lord, that we live in a place like this, such beauty, such joy. Thank you for friends and family. We thank you for your blessings on America, on Tennessee, on us here in Carter County. We give you all praise and thanks, in Jesus' name, amen.
We'll now have President Lee, Mr. Scott Sam.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the agenda as it is written. Now, the motion, Mr. Lee, to adopt the agenda is presented.
Say.
Have a second, Mr. Cap. Any discussion? All say aye.
Aye.
All those?
No.
The record show we have two noes. That'd be Mr. Lewis and Mr. Vaughn Campbell. But I'm missing that. Motion carries. Accept the minutes from the previous meeting. Have a motion.
Make a motion.
Say.
Motion of Mr. Lewis, second, Mr. Chairman, to accept the minutes. Any discussion? All say aye.
Aye.
All those? Motion carries. No reason to box.
Amy Arm, Kimra, Tony Clark, Lois, and Dan, and John, and Kate Banks, Penny Ray Street, Kenny S. Cornett, and Bobby Don'tough, and Kevin Lord, the director of the food block. And not only, not only released, as Hadwell Banks, Jennifer Aron, Amy Mase, Liv Free, Son of P Miller, and Lady Jo Jackson. Mr. Lee, say.
We will accept Mr. Coles, second, on the cross and ship, now any discussion. All say aye.
Aye.
All those? Motion carries. This time, I recognize our rating and the forty appointed officials and guests, if you please stand. We'll have a manager for it.
Thank you, Chairman. First and foremost, each of you have a flyer on your table in front of you pertaining to the Mount States Health Alliance Heart Coach. We will be hosting the coach here on Wednesday, July 11th, from 7:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. to provide the very worthy service, so I would encourage you to pack this along for all constituents throughout the community, and hopefully we'll have a great participation in that division. Tennessee Code Anticipated Seventy, Seven, Dash Eight, Two, Dash Three, or Seven Commissioners, Numbers, Terms, Vacancies, Collection of Commissioners, Section Four. Vacancies on the Board of Commissioners shall be filled by appointment of the county mayor within sixty days after the occurrence of a vacancy in the office of any commissioner caused by debt, resignation, disability, or forfeiture of office, and no later than thirty days prior to the expiration of the term of office of any incumbent commissioner. The Board of Commissioners or its remaining members shall select three nominees to fill such office in accordance with any residential requirement that may apply to the office vacated or to be vacated and under the seal of the Board of Commissioners, shall certify such list of nominees in order of preference recommended by such commissioners to the county mayor of the county in which the utility district or its principal office is located, or the county in which the commissioners customarily meet if the district has no principal office. Within twenty-one days after the issuance of certification by the Board of Commissioners to the county mayor, the county mayor may enter an order either appointing one of the nominees or rejecting the entire list, or may refrain from taking any action, in which the first name on the list of nominees shall be deemed appointed to fill the vacancy or new term by operation of law. Any order to either appoint one of the nominees or reject the list of nominees shall be entered on record on the minutes of the county legislative body, and a certified copy of the order shall be furnished to the Board of Commissioners and to the appropriate, uh, county. Linda Guy, Office Manager, here at the Utility District, advanced correspondence, the date on June 11th. Therein she advised that Mr. Rhonda Pierce resigned his position on June 1st. She also provided a certified list of nominees dated June 5th for new appointment consideration. There's a copy of said list in your packet. The first name on the list is that of Mr. David Caden. Per the provisions of the statute, David Caden shall be noted as a new appointed to fill the remainder of Mr. Pierce's term, which expired on May 8, 2015. Madam Clark, please let the minutes reflect this appointment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I say so?
Absolutely. Provide Chairman a while.
Can I say so?
It is.
As fellow commissioners, this Hampton U. T. O. is. Now, they go ahead and pick somebody that ain't never been to a meeting, don't get more to operate than Hampton U. T. O. than nothing. Now, they, they are about four or five times all the time to these Hampton U. T. O. meetings. They all knows who's one of them, but they don't like me, Lord. I don't consent myself to nominate for a water pusher, but we gonna have to change this thing, someone else. Uh, the people at Hampton will have a bit more say-so as the wall goes, who, where the money goes. Uh, all they doing now is buying land and buying vehicles, and they go out and pick somebody out of the thin air, David Caden, nothing but who want to be doing nothing, and send his name to have you appoint him. Now, Mr. Perry got no do with you, but I think it's time that we, as commissioners, make some kind of provisions that we can start this stuff, and we gonna have to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Although hundreds of thousands of elders are abused and financially exploited throughout the country each year, abuse of grownups remains a covered and underreported crime, according to national statistics. The National Institute of Justice Studies estimate that only one out of twenty-four instances of abuse is ever reported. Older Americans lose an estimated $2.6 billion annually due to financial scams and exploitation, according to statistics from the Administration on Aging. Elderly and disabled are targets for abuse because, in many instances, they are violent and rely on others for help. It unfortunately can happen to anyone. No one is immune. Signs of abuse include unexplained bruises, isolation, or no money for food or medicine. Other signs include belittling and threatening the elderly, bed sores and unattended medical needs. Strained relationships can also be a tip-off as to abuse. Friday, June 15th, this past, was World Elder Abuse Day. Today is designated to bring awareness to the victims of abuse and to remind people that it can happen anywhere, even in our towns, communities, and families. Thus, I issued a proclamation urging all citizens to work to prevent abuse, neglect, and exploitation of our elderly citizens, and to raise awareness and increase prevention around all people affected by this devastating crime. Father, I challenge each of you commissioners to get the word out to all constituents within your respective districts. If someone is being subjected to elder abuse, a call should be made to the Tennessee Elder Abuse Line at 1-888-277-8366. The call can be made anonymously. We must all take a stand in support of those that need our help, the elderly. Earlier this month, I received correspondence from Paula Mitchell, household hazardous waste coordinator, uh, with Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. Therein, she expressed her appreciation for Carter County's participation in Tennessee's Household Hazard Waste Collection, Mobile Collection Program. She also extended a special thank you to Mr. Benny Lyons, thank you, Benny, and all the volunteers that made the May 19th event possible. This year, thirty-eight households took advantage of this opportunity to dispose, to dispose of their hazardous waste. The total weight of the material collected came in at 3,758 pounds. Among these were flammable liquids, corrosive, oxidizing agents, poisonous, and reactive materials, paint, and fluorescent bulbs. Each of you was provided a household hazard waste collection summary cross-reference sheet which outlines all the specifics of this event. Let's all work diligently, get the word out to our citizens, and do everything possible to educate the public. We must take a firm stance for the proper disposal of hazardous waste. The future of our environment and our overall quality of life depends on it. I'll be the first to admit that I made a mistake the last fiscal year during the budget process. At that time, I made a plea to the Budget Committee and the entire commission to do an across-the-board cut of five to ten percent. Ultimately, the commission did not make any cuts. To the contrary, the entire process resulted in a $35,000 transfer from the rescue squad to the volunteer fire department. Also, $1.5 million was added to the Sheriff's Department, needed, $500,000 to the General Fund, and a million dollars to the school system. Thus, you presented our employer, the citizens of Carter County, with a $3 million year after year tax obligation without providing any additional service. Also, you failed to increase the tax rate to the level that would cover these obligations, and then proceeded to rob the balance from the debt service fund. I also failed in that I did not take a firmer stance against a tax increase. More importantly, I did not take the lead, failed to adjust my budgets, and failed to set the example for you to follow. Fully understanding the fact that if you keep doing the same things in the same fashion expecting a different result, you will be extremely disappointed. I am committed to not make the same mistake twice. Thus, I've done my homework, looked closely at all departments within the county general fund, as well as the school system, and documented the overall trend of each for the budget years 2007 to present. For we must, for we must recognize and acknowledge where we have been in order to see where we need to go. Let's start with the county general fund. At end of fiscal year on June 30, 2007, there was a surplus of $1.8 million. $1 million in 2008, $856,526 in 2009, $458,137 in 2010, and a deficit of $889,284 in 2011. The school system ended the year on June 30, 2007, with a $767,806 surplus, $486,378 in 2008, $146,687 in 2009, and then a $68,569,000 deficit in 2010, and a $252,270 deficit in 2011. I hope you see where I'm going with this. A deep hole has been dug, and it's getting deeper every day. If this county government continues to spend more money than revenues will support, it will eventually become bankrupt. The people elected each of you and entrusted you with the care and custody of their hard-earned tax dollars. You have a fiduciary duty and responsibility to manage these funds wisely. You must condition yourselves to approach all spending issues from the standpoint, will these expenditures result in a return on investment? The officeholders and appointed officials must manage their departments as efficiently as possible. They must constantly work to cut costs while at the same time striving to improve the quality and level of services for their constituents. It is done daily in the private sector and is referred to operating lean or doing more with less. The government approach should not be any different. It is obvious that the days of revenue infusions from the federal and state level are over. Local governments must recognize that their problems are structured and not simply the result of the national economic slowdown. The Carter County government model is broken. We're not the only, but it's broken. Infrastructure and constituent services that county government is expected to provide cannot be financed based on existing revenue streams and current approaches to government operations. We, you, and I must transform our business model to ensure that it is physically sustainable over the long term. We must start now. For next year and the year after could very well be too late. Thus, I've taken a firm stance and made a 2.5% cut in the mayor's budget, as well as a 3.7% cut in the county buildings budget. These cuts equate to $32,483. Within this amount, a 1.6% state mandated pay increase for the elected official, as well as a 2% pay increase for all staff members, was absorbed. I had challenged all officeholders to do the same. However, most only absorbed the pay increase but did not make any real cuts to the budget. It is important to note, the employee pay increases equate only a fraction of a percent when one considers the entire budget. For example, if I had only absorbed the pay increases within the mayor's and buildings budget, the amount would have equated to approximately $2,500, as opposed to $32,483, resulting in a cut of only three tenths of a percent. Our current financial situation demands that we all do more than this for balancing the total budget. Fortunately, this year, we are looking at a surplus in the county general fund of $910,770. These excess monies are directly attributable to the sheriff, not fully staffing, due to extended delays in completion of the job, and the dollar increase in health insurance rates. It is estimated that there will also be an additional $300-plus thousand surplus throughout the general fund departments. This amount is based on conservative numbers. For instance, the planning department last year had a surplus of over $35,000 for approximately 13% of its total budget. Chantry Court had a surplus of over $66,000, which equates to approximately 22% of its budget. The clear majority of all remaining departments that I reviewed traditionally see a surplus greater than 2%, with the average being much higher. County governments all across the country are making 3% to 5% bottom line cuts, with some going as high as 10%. Have no choice. They're surviving. Why is or should Carter County be any different? The record indicates that a 1% cut across the board from 2011 to '12, county general and general purpose school funds totaling $52.6 million would result in a savings of over $526,000. This, in addition to the current $1.2 million surplus, equates over $1.7 million. You've seen the numbers. This would be more than ample funds to balance the actual monetary needs of both systems, including the special needs requests by 911, First Tennessee Development District, and the pathology department at E.T.U. This action would result in no significant negative impacts or create unnecessary burdens for any one department. Also, it would result in a substantial amount going forward debt service. Most importantly, there'd be no tax increase passed on to the citizens of Carter County, and no further constraints placed on our business owners. It is critical that we take a totally new approach going forward, one where we, one where we invest in our infrastructure, working diligently toward the creation of a community environment that will attract and support new business and industry, not stifling. It's not rocket science, simple math, or business economics at the outside. Each of you has a duty and obligation to ensure that this happens. If you choose to continue to levy taxes when there is no reasonable justification for it, that being improvements to constituent services, incorporation of new systems which improve operating efficiencies, or the deployment of needed infrastructure. Also, once the budget is set and established, you must ensure that all of that diet already fell again. So, if I, I will go on record, I for one will not support any tax increase with this budget signed. I'm totally against placing an unwarranted burden on our citizens at this time when it is totally obvious that we have the means to operate with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, we have some resolutions before us.
Title VI.
Thank you, Mr. Burt, have a say.
Say.
Me and say. Any discussion? All Mr. Lewis.
Haven't we done watch any lately? Now, I have read it, but, uh, I don't really want to watch what they are, or why they do. Didn't want the order, never get the law in register.
Would you like to ask Mr. Bowden a question, uh, if you say?
Well, my necessary question, but he said he'd been reading from a number of federal titles, uh, legislation. What do you focus that, we mean, about any county law?
Those are the same thing going on every year. You go and go it many times.
I understand that, but have we been filed any county law?
Mr. Bowden? The Title VI resolution is approved each year, and it's, it's federal mandate that we show that we're in compliance with Title VI on an annual basis. We typically do this resolution this time of year, every year, and if anything, if we're wrong, it's required and we receive federal funding, if I'm correct.
That's correct.
It is a very important resolution.
It's all about doing good, good with funding.
Yes, sir, federal funding. Yes, Commissioner Lewis.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
We already have that motion, we can have any other discussion.
You only have a motion for the white race.
It's white race.
Yeah, on the floor.
Motion of Mr. Tre, say a pretty good second for Mr. Hayes. I'll fight it. Kyle Rowe.
I don't want to say. You need a motion to waive reading. If you voted on it, take on the fourth vote. There was a motion to waive reading and that needs to be resolved first.
You have that motion to waive reading. I'll fight it. I. All opposed?
Opposed.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Lewis votes no. And I have a motion to approve by Mr. Trump and second by Mr. Hayes. Colorado.
Dever Peters.
Aye.
Key Ritchie.
Aye.
Laura Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Harry Seuss.
Aye.
Charles John Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Castor.
Aye.
Stephen Rance.
Aye.
Tom Mallow.
Aye.
Joy Blankenship.
Aye.
Charlie Vayner.
Aye.
Nikki Reddrow.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chamberlain.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Fowler.
Aye.
Russell Tann.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Kat Hees.
Aye.
Nora Fergoff.
Aye.
All those.
All eyes motion to carry. Property tax partial payment resolution.
Resolution, partial payment current and linked to property taxes. Are we, you want me to go and give a little?
You go and read this one. I'll leave it to you.
Okay. Whereas in the best interest of Carter County taxpayers and citizens, that a partial payment system be established for current and delinquent property taxes. And whereas Tennessee Code Annotated TCA Section 67-5-1801E states, one, any county trustee may accept partial payments of property taxes. Two, prior to any county trustee accepting a partial payment of property taxes, the county trustee shall file a plan with the Comptroller of the Treasury. Plan shall include, the county trustee's office has the county system technology to implement a program for partial payment of property taxes. Plan shall also indicate whether such a program will be implemented within the existing operating resources of the office or indicate prior approval of the county legislative body if approved and additional operating resources are needed. This subdivision, E2, does not apply to any county which has a partial payment program prior April 1, 1995. Number three, county trustee may accept taxes paid by electronic funds transferred, including but not limited to bank customer preauthorized payments, wire transfers, or HCH credits. If the entire amount of taxes due is not paid prior to the legality date of the taxes, the entire property shall be subject to tax lien enforcement by tax sale or the legally authorized procedures. Unless partial payment is made by electronic transfer of funds, if the county trustee accepts partial payment within 10 days of the legality date or the time following such legality date, and prior to accepting such payment, the county trustee must inform the taxpayer of the legality date and must advise the taxpayer that the property may be subjected to tax lien enforcement by tax sale or the legally authorized procedures. Four, direct bank transfers and partial payments are subject to the following guidelines. A, vouchers issued pursuant to a tax related program shall be used as all or portion of the final payment. B, a receipt shall be issued to the taxpayer for any partial payment of taxes. Receipt shall state that, a, the payment is a partial payment of property taxes. Two, the balance owing on such taxes must be paid prior to the legality date. And three, failure to pay the entire amount of taxes prior to the legality date subjects any unpaid taxes that benefits an interest applicable to the delinquent taxes subjects the entire property unless a loan to taxes to a tax sale. Final payment shall show that a zero balance is owing and shall state that taxes are paid in full. Receipts shall also be sent to the taxpayer for payments made by direct transfer of funds. And C, if any county have a metropolitan form of government, population excess of $5,000 according to 1990 census or any subsequent federal census, the trustee may set a minimum requirement of no more than, or probably no more than or less for 50% or $25 for any partial payment. Whereas Tennessee Code Annotated TCA Section 67-5-201 states, A, one, after a tax becomes illegal, the county trustee shall have the power to appoint such deputies and maybe necessary for collection of the taxes. And in such cases, county trustee shall punish the deputies and the taxpayers for the destruction of property assessed against each and amount of taxes due from each. Two, in cases involving the taxes assessed against real property, such as to identify the current owner of the property and the owner's last known address. Such only can be easily identified, and those cases shall not identify any former owners. Three, nothing in subsection H, everything is true, does any matter affect the liability of the current owner or any former owner? Four, county trustee shall receive no compensation for making out the legal list for the officers as provided. B, the official bond with county trustee shall be liable and be held to cover the official acts of such deputy trustees. Constables and deputy sheriffs turn the legal tax list will be furnished by the county trustee. The county trustee shall have the power and the tools for turning over to such officers such legal list to require them bond in such a manner and such a sum as the county trustee deemed may deem appropriate, conditioned upon the faith and performance of their duties in full and complete settlement of all sums collected by them on the legal tax list. Which bond shall be payable to the county trustee and upon which the county trustee shall have the right of action for any default of such officers. C, all this should be turned by such officer on or before January 1. D, one, notwithstanding any general law or private act of the contrary, the county trustee may accept partial payments of delinquent property taxes, including but not limited to payment by electronic transfers, bank customer preauthorized payments, wire transfers, or ACH credits. If the entire amount of delinquent taxes is due is not paid to the date, the trustee delivers the legal tax list and the legal tax attorney, the entire property shall be subject to tax lien enforcement by tax sale or the legally authorized procedures. Two, prior to any county trustee accepting partial payment of delinquent property taxes, the county trustee shall file a plan with the Comptroller of the Treasury with study date prior to acceptance of the plan. Plan shall indicate that county trustee's office has the county system technology to implement a program, partial payment of delinquent property taxes. Plan shall also indicate whether the program will be implemented within the existing operating resources of the office or indicate prior approval by the county legislative body if additional operating resources are needed. P, three, the legal date for property taxes and penalties and interest. Apple, the legal property taxes shall have the effect of application of a partial payment system established in the county. Four, terms and interest shall apply only to the amount of legal property taxes remaining due. Five, partial payment of the legal property taxes except that the partial payment does not release the tax on the property of all the taxes were assessed. Whereas Carter County trustee's office in compliance with TCA Section 67-5-1801E2 and TCA Section 67-5-2001D2 with has submitted a plan to the State of Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury's Office on May 5, 2012, and May 18, 2012, and received approval from the State of Tennessee on May 21, 2012, for its plan. County trustee's office also obtained supporting information in the affirmative that its software platform, which is provided by the local government corporation, is capable of accepting partial payments and has the capability to enforce a criteria of the plan filed with the State of Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury's Office. And whereas Carter County trustee's plan for partial payment of property tax, which was filed with the State of Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury's Office, allows for the taxpayer to make maximum of four payments with a minimum payment of 25% with total due being required for payment. The plan does not affect accrued interest and feelings of unpaid delinquent taxes and would only apply to taxes prior to being turned over to the public master, public court or court's office who has been charged with duty of administration or collection of links with taxes. And whereas the acceptance of partial payment of property taxes will ease the burden on the owners of Carter County, especially those with a low and/or restricted household income. And whereas the acceptance of partial payments of property taxes will ease the burden of challenging economic times by allowing more convenient means for property owners to meet their financial obligations. And whereas all Tennessee Code Annotated requirements listed in TCA Section 65-5-1801 and TCA Section 67-5-2001 concerning the collection of property taxes and partial payment of property taxes will remain in effect with the passage of this resolution. And now therefore be resolved by the County Commission of Carter County, Tennessee, meeting as regular session, Elizabeth, Tennessee, on the 18th day of June, 2012. The lawful form of the commission being present, or majority of the commission voting affirmative, agree to allow the trustee to accept partial payments on current and delinquent taxes, filed with nothing but resolution to be construed to force the trustee to take payments in a form different and a currently accepted, specifically the trustee should not be, should not take payments by electronic transfer, electronic transfer, as the office does not have the necessary hardware and software to accommodate that form of payment at this time. And be resolved, fully resolved. This resolution will take effect on and at your satisfaction, as the board requires.
Mr. Chairman.
All votes from Governor's ground. The two minutes set by Mr. Lewis. We have a discussion. I'll welcome it.
Dever Peters.
Aye.
Key Ritchie.
Aye.
Laura Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Harry Seuss.
Aye.
Charles John Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Castor.
Aye.
Stephen Rance.
Aye.
Tom Mallow.
Aye.
Joy Blankenship.
Aye.
Charlie Vayner.
Aye.
Nikki Reddrow.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chamberlain.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Fowler.
Russell Tann.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Kat Hees.
Aye.
Nora Fergoff.
Aye.
All those. Motion to carry.
Uh, in your package, you have a copy of this contract. We didn't have it available when we had a law enforcement committee. Since then, we've faced some problems with the numbers. And at this time, I'd like to, well, if Mr. Trump wants to press this, if you'd like to press this, it won't happen to you. Read the numbers on what the state is offering. The contract is for the first year is $198,000. I think it's capped at that. If you do your multiplication of 20 inmates at $37 a day, you'd be receiving $740 a day, and $740 a day times 365 is $270,000, not $100. And my question was, are we agreeing to give 20 inmates for the $198,000 when we should be giving 270? Or is the state going to pay us the addition if we give those numbers? So, at this time, what we need to do is find out what the state and its intentions are. And we maybe need to turn it back over to the finance and let them come back to law enforcement when they find out what the deal is, or maybe the attorney.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to update everyone, today, this morning, 10:25, I did get an email from Jerry Froder. The copy that you have, there's no change in that. I've since this afternoon sent the email over to the term dollars. On page three, B2, term extension, that has been removed. So, basically, this contract, the same contract that we operate under in all three of these years up to today, the only difference is, and I can see, is the amount of reimbursement going from $35 to $37 per day. It affected July 1, 2012. Now, this contract's been in place for quite some time, and there's just been an annual renewal. We signed off on that based on the previous commitment that within the terms of the contract, however, this year, we're taking on a new term, a new five-year span. And I felt compelled to come before the commission to review that and bless it. And I think previously, before we signed those previous year extensions, I did talk to the chief and he raised the same issue then. Now, as far as actual drawers and cens, I assume that in the past, it was probable for the county, but I don't know that. I don't have the numbers. But also, it does state in that contract on A7A, the contractor agrees to reserve 20 beds at the facility for housing felons sent to the Department of Corrections pursuant to this contract. If the number of felons should exceed this number and the contractor requests removal, the state shall remove within 60 days of such notice being given to the state's director of classification or his designated. So, you do have that out. And again, if I had known you had those issues, now we probably would have gotten this thing here to give us more. Is there anything that you can expand upon as far as have we taken along so far? Based on this contract, it's been in place for quite some time.
That's totally a jail operation. That has nothing in my way. They'd be able to tell you if they're operating within a loss or not. I don't know.
Yeah, I can advise on that. I know since I've been sheriff, we've tried to honor the county's contract with those state inmates. Let me make it real clear. We don't prank people in here in Chattanooga, Memphis, Knoxville, anywhere. The inmates that we have are Carter County inmates that are on criminal, been to criminal court, that are waiting sentence, waiting at state fed for one or three years of a sentence. You're getting some of that revenue back, and we try to honor them. But any future negotiation, I'd love to be a part of that since we're having to keep up with those. We feel like the county's getting cheated. I want to make sure that you should be getting what they say that we're giving you. There's $70,000 discrepancy there in what they will pay per day, but they're capping out. So, I know that's something that county attorney could get involved in. But if I'm all three, there's something we'll have to do all the work in order to make sure everybody's on the same page and we're getting the appropriate money that we should be getting.
But the contract states your total contract amount. So, that's something we need to get.
Right. It's a turnover five-year period for a lower $10,000 bounty in one. And by all means, I think you did the crucial numbers. Date, beginning date of July 1, 2012, right through 17, and that's right, four years. Uh, Mr.?
Mr. Chairman? Uh, I read this contract, and now I've got tons of problems with it. We, as a county commission, one of the first meetings we went to was Downey-Jonesboro. And one of the commissioners, thinking of Mr. Lewis, asked a question. You know, what, if C TAC did ever ran the numbers on what it costs to house these state inmates? And everybody at the prison remembers that they said $70 some dollars. At the time, they C TAC told us it was $32. The information I've got here is $35 per prisoner. Well, we get these mailouts from county, this is from the county news. This is publication of Tennessee County Services Association. This is to help us as commissioners. And I read this article talking about our budget. They did up it, about our state budget. They did up it to $2 on our prisoners. But in this article, reading about the history of reimbursements to local jails, I just want to read just a few things. The most important is the average actual daily cost in four-year tenure was 55.54 per inmate for the eight or four local facilities receiving reimbursements as reported. So, we know there's a loss there. There's a loss. And also, it also makes this statement, and this is what I have a problem with. I don't understand. But it says 32 per day for prisoner, and the reimburse rate, reimburse rate for non-contract counties ranges from $20 to $105 per day. So, in other words, a non-contract county, I don't know how they base this or anything else, but we get up to $105 per day, and we're contracted at, under this new contract, at $37 a day. And in reference to what the mayor was saying on A7A, the contract agrees to reserve 20 beds in the facilities for housing felons sent to the Tennessee Department of Correction pursuant to the contract. If the number of felons should exceed this number and the contract requests removal, the state shall remove within 60 days. That's an excess, excess of 20. That doesn't mean that 20, you can't change that number. Now, the figures are wrong on the front of the contract. And I challenge every commissioner, you're to read this in its entirety. State is protected. I love my state, but we all know that funding has been cut. That's why we're having problems in education, you know, with our budget there. They've cut out some monies that's been coming through stimulus monies and all those type things. And here, we're looking at something that's costing Carter County lots of money. I think if you could do the math, and this is this publication. This is not C TAC. C TAC said that was $70 some dollars. So, I don't know if it's right here, but it's $37 versus this right here just says they've caused, I wish I had done my 55.54 per day, one inmate. One inmate. Can you figure that really quick, three hundred and sixty-five?
I just did twenty inmates, because that's what our contract is for. Twenty inmates at fifty-five, fifty-four a day for three hundred and sixty-five days is four hundred and five thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars.
And you said the amount should be what, two?
Two hundred and seventy thousand.
And that's at thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven.
Twenty. So through, through the church, both of you are having, what's the difference there? A hundred and some thousand dollars? So I ask, uh, that we take a good look at this contract and find out who, how we can negotiate a better deal if we're going to fight for housing.
Mr. Lewis, would you wish to speak?
Yeah, let the mayor wait.
Right. Now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, now, I want to do, uh, county meetings. As for what I would get into, I ask this question. These county jails, certified or non-certified, how it's an operation? And they say the same. Now, they told me fifty-four two weeks ago, it takes fifty-five dollars per inmate keeping in a county jail. Now, they smarter than we are. They know it takes fifty-five dollars to do this, but they're going to offer us thirty-seven dollars. But they said, oh, we've got good news for you. The water's thirty-five dollars, we're going to give you two more dollars. Make deal. Now, if my capital is right, we lose fifty thou, about forty-five thousand dollars a year. We losing eighteen dollars a day by the state of you, so what they going to give us? And, uh, it's all Tennessee, say, wait now, they, they said that they was down to three or four counties, all of them certified, said three or four counties, and they walking on that. They know we can't keep state prisons in these jails unless you get certification. But I think we should send them a letter. Say, okay, you want to play hardball, you can tell God, uh, you can tell them we got to give a piece of the rights when we don't have the money. You pay us fifty-five dollars a day, all we doing is taking prisoners. And if, if they want us to have the state prisons, and which I don't think we're making any money out of it, then they give us fifty-five dollars. But they always tell them they don't pay no money in state prisons.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Chairman.
First, I've got a question. What if we go below twenty?
They still owe you.
Mayor, you guys are, leave it there.
Do you have twenty dollars?
Two twenty.
Or do we go below twenty? Nish, the five-year contract. I've got reservations about the five-year contract.
I, I read the contract, it'd be if you, if you have below twenty, you're paid per prisoner, not a lump sum. So if you have fifteen, you're paid per fifteen, you're ten, it's per ten.
We bill a monthly on population and we have, they have these paper ready. That's a state for person ready to go to the facility for us to help.
But we have to have beds available for twenty all the time.
That's all your dream.
Mr. Lawrence.
I've asked the same question several times. I think these two years have run with John Furrow. They tell us that there's no way that, that the county can house state prisoners without head. One time, I know there was some considering how it was a hundred state prisoner. And I asked the question, if we house a hundred state prisoners, what, what will they do for us? And he said he would break your county. So he said, if you're not getting fifty or more dollars, uh, per prisoner, per state prisoner, you're losing money, is what they told us, John Furrow.
Mr. Aron.
Mr. Peters answered my question.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we turn this back over to the law enforcement committee and the first state.
Just, Mr. Peters actually has the floor. Ask questions and the next statements, but, Mr. Peters, do you? Are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me make a comment, I'm not supporting this contract one way or the other. Uh, if the numbers show, we don't have the numbers now seen, what we've benefited or lost over the last eighteen, twelve years? If it's a loss, by all means, we don't want to enter into the contract. If, though, there is some profit margin, we'll have to look at the finance numbers to target that. Then you need to reconsider. One thing about the article that, uh, Mr. Shree's talking about there, the General Assembly made the change as a result of being lobbied heavily by the Tennessee Association of County Commissioners. So that's where you factor two-dollar increase through the records in the General Assembly.
Now, Mr. Chairman, you, you have something?
Mr. Valas, uh, may I ask a question of Attorney Valas? Sure. If, uh, a person is convicted of a crime in Carter County in its felony and they're sentenced to state prison and there's no bed available, are we required to house those people in Carter County until a bed is available?
And, yes.
That was my impression, yes. We have open strategy, so we are there. But if we have to house them, we need to get some kind of reimbursement.
Mr. Richard.
Uh, Sheriff, it, it, in, uh, is it true that if you don't receive a five-year sentence or a three-year sentence, you have to do it in county jail, or if you can't get a bed in prison up here or nowhere, unless you get it, it's a three-year or five-year? It's three years, they won't take any annoying, uh, I see we have to hold them in the county because they can't get a bed in the state prison. So I'm like Mr. Lewis, I think we need to do a little, we need to do a little, uh, hardball here. Let's, let's, let's take this thing back. Let's, let's, they've got school teachers, they mandate everything on us, but they don't want to give us no money. I think this is one chance we have to fight back.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Free.
Mr. Chairman, I have one, uh, one question I want to ask, uh, and this is important, but I think, uh, I've heard no one mention healthcare for these inmates. Like, what happens if we have one of these that can sit and has to be hospitalized? Who takes up, who takes up the?
That's in the market.
It's a thousand dollars. It's a thousand dollars.
It's camp, it's a thousand dollars.
A thousand dollars, I would prefer. What do they?
One, captain. County states, the first thousand dollars, the state. Yes, at the greatest.
Mr. Lawrence.
I wanted to, I know it would be fair to ask the sheriff, I passed by your garden, and maybe you can people, I'll shoot for them. His, can you, can you come out at thirty-seven dollars?
For a group. Uh, with the new jail, I mean, I have the question of, I mean, I know I did. I don't relate the education against, I mean, if we can do that today.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion on the court.
Yes, sir, would you care to restate that, please?
That I turn this over, back over to the law enforcement committee, let them study and make the recommendations for the court next week.
I hope you can do it out of six.
Six.
Uh, Mr. Lawrence. Any other discussions? Kyle Broke, please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
You, Richard.
Aye.
Norton.
Aye.
Nate Brandt.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Tritt.
Aye.
Ari Sitt.
Aye.
Charles Von Kenan.
Aye.
Elsie Kess.
Aye.
Steve Corant.
Aye.
Tom Mallow.
Aye.
Joey Blankenship.
Aye.
Charlie Bayless.
Aye.
Dickie Redrow.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chamberlain.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Koha. Russell Pat.
Aye.
Scott Sane. Uh, Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Nick.
Aye.
And Robert Gollum.
Aye. All eyes motion carried, go back to the law enforcement committee. Now, um, for, the land, construction advisory contract. Mr. Mayor, would you like to address this, or, uh, the animal shelter director, Chris Jones, or come up?
Each of you received a, uh, animal shelter construction advisory contract. This contract, uh, was presented to city council last week. They approved it, it's my understanding, from the message that I got earlier today, Mayor Alexander's already signed, uh, for the city. Uh, have not received that copy. Uh, just to give you a little history, I don't mean to lighten this fact, but you recall, almost two years ago, uh, we did, uh, contribute two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the destruction of the Elizabeth Carter County Animal Shelter. City of Elizabeth had put in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Since that time, the friends of the animal shelter, or the animal shelter rebuilding, uh, committee, it was made up of primarily citizens throughout the community through fundraising, um, have also donated to the fund at the city an additional ninety thousand dollars. So with that, we've got about five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We had a set of plans last year, last fall, that were, the bids were left. The low bidder came in at just under a million dollars, and that was locked for a turnkey facility. There was considerable amount of work, about two hundred thousand dollars worth of materials and the like, that was going to be done on the interior of this. That work would have been performed by the correctional facility inmates that run the mountain, keep the cost down once this structure was dryed in. At that time, we had a, uh, construction manager that had been hired. We had low bidder, however, we didn't have the million too, basically, it took to build that facility. Uh, almost seven thousand square feet, very nice facility, many months, well over a year in design by reading sites. So with that, we had, uh, multiple meetings with the city, county, and, uh, just came to the sad conclusion that there are no additional funds available for the shelter. We had signed a memorandum of agreement with the city of Elizabeth. Uh, we created a animal shelter advisory committee, representatives from this board as well as the city. We hired a animal shelter director. And, uh, we have only five hundred and ninety thousand dollars to build this shelter. So we had to go back to a totally new design on the building. There's been considerable work going into that. Mr. Joey White has, has put that design on the table. Now we're working about twenty-seven, below twenty-seven hundred square feet of facility. The city donated the land, however, there's extensive site work which required at that facility to build the animal shelter. We expedite the situation that's possible. The construction manager that we had lined up last year, provided we had hired the general contractor, that was one thing. He was willing to do that last fall and oversee the work in spring. However, keep in mind, that was a general contractor that would have been subbing the work and then bringing of the, uh, correctional facility inmates in and in for the project to do the finish work. We don't have that luxury now, because basically, there will be some phases of the construction that are subbed out, namely the site prep, slab work, and mechanics, plumbing, electrical, whatever's required, subterranean. Uh, we're a little bit behind the gun. We want to break ground in, in, uh, July, if at all possible. Uh, we needed to have this person on staff actually two to three weeks ago, because there's tremendous amount of work that this person needs to do overseas uh, in order to make sure that site's ready and coordinate schedules and everything with the correctional facility and their staff in there and, uh, run down. Those crews are working at the schools during the summer. We don't have access to them, so mid-August is what we're looking at. And, uh, with that, the final plans are just about complete, mechanicals, as far as I know. Uh, we should be able to let, uh, the bids for that preparation, site preparation work. And, uh, it would be ideal if we could let those and get, uh, work commencing soon in July. If we don't get that done, we will not have a site ready for those people in mid-August, and there's a good chance that we will not get it dryed in before winter. So, uh, David Ornduff, Mike Barnett, chairman, uh, of the animal shelter advisory committee, myself, Joey White, uh, animal shelter director, Miss April Jones. We've met with this gentleman, uh, his credentials, uh, are in place. There's, there's no doubt that he's highly capable of doing job. So we have to build a facility. We need this mail job now, as soon as possible, and the contract is before you for approval. Keep in mind, if we had have known, if we had have known that we didn't have the funds and the cost of this shelter was outside of that bid process, we would have made provision similar in that original memorandum of agreement that we've already approved. Uh, Attorney Bowers, uh, I will hand this to him, I can give him a hand. He worked diligently on this. We were trying to expedite, I went to bed on the job two weeks ago. And even while I was on vacation, he worked one morning about three AM. He got me a rough draft, and I was able to take the next order from financial management for their review. Attorney Bowers has reviewed this document. Uh, Roger Day has reviewed the document. City, uh, manager Fred Edens has reviewed it. The changes that they had requested today, that they felt were necessary, that all parties have been incorporated. And this is the final draft that was approved by the city.
Mr. Mayor, I ask a question.
Yes, sir.
What type building is it? Will it be a metal building or a block building?
It'll be a masonry building now. Initially, it was going to be a, uh, a metal building. There would be a knee wall that was built up with masonry block and, uh, uh, more of a steel construction. But it's taken on a totally new design to try to, to build this thing within the, uh, monetary constraints that we have before us.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We know what happened on the jail, we're not happy with it. Someone will report it. But my critical opinion is sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars a year, anybody? About that, you remember it, my thing.
It is, uh, uh, sizable amount of money. Just keep in mind, project manager, if you get someone that's qualified, has background and experience, you're going to pay basically the same for his services if the cost of building is a hundred thousand, uh, five hundred thousand, or a million. And, uh, when I approached the jail task force committee, even before I was elected to this office, I made a, uh, a request, you know, we, we heard all of the, the labor problems that we were having at the time and all the issues, and everybody was singing the blues, and being new kid on the block, I asked the question, where's your project manager? We don't have one. Jerome Kitchen did stand up and, uh, provide a statement. We don't have one because we felt we couldn't afford it. Uh, what was it going to cost you? About a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So about the same as this guy. And I know it's, the scope of the projects are world apart. However, if we had had that project manager, we could probably save several million dollars. If we had a man on site, day in, day out, drawings in hand, and ported back to the mayor or whoever, we will save a ton of money.
Did you say that this will eventually be a no-kill zone?
That, that would be the goal, however, that may be impossible. You know, right now, it would take years for us to get to that level. And I would defer that question to our director, April Jones. I don't speak out. Turn, April, could you come up and, and just answer this question for Mr. Von Ken?
Can I ask you another question, what time she's coming?
Yes, sir.
All this money that you go pay this, can it, it not going to come from the camp, right? It going to come out of?
It will come out of the funds that the county and city have already deposited. Those, those payments will be made, he'll be reporting back regularly. Uh, no less than a monthly basis, he'll be coming before the animal shelter advisory committee because we've outlined to him our type of strengths, we cannot get overlooked. So, yes, April.
Good evening. Um, as far as being a no-kill animal shelter, unfortunately, I don't think that's actually possible for a municipal shelter. You will always have to take in injured, wild, totally unreadhabitable animals. The goal, of course, is to adopt that as many adoptable animals as possible. I don't know how soon that that would be capable. This new shelter is going to be reasonably small, so I just don't know how, how soon we'd be able to accomplish that. small, so I just don't know how soon we'd be able to accomplish that.
I was there today, and honestly, they're going to do euthanization tomorrow, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Ten or fifteen animals. There's an animal there, if you need a big dog. His name is Ike. He's a big lab with a ruffus rider head. That dog is a beautiful animal.
He is.
He's been there a long time, so he's one of the ones.
He has made the cut several times. He is a fantastic dog, unfortunately, he is a very large dog.
Where'd he go? Let's keep the question pertinent to the situation at hand here. Mr. Teschler, do you have a question?
I have a question, but later, was this job advertised?
It was not advertised, sir. Initially, after we had a document, a memorandum of agreement with the city, it was thought that since the city was taking on the money, they would be making a total disbursement, this person would operate directly under the leadership of probably Mr. Ornduff at the city. Of course, a lot changed within that period, and Mr. Ornduff is the person that screened the first construction manager. I knew that gentleman personally, I met him, Mr. Ornduff introduced me to him at Reedian Sites. He was a very professional gentleman, I'd worked under his direction guidance myself, so I didn't have any problems with that.
He was built in, I had a problem with paying him that much money. His ability, his background, I had a problem, you know, I would agree, we need approximately, but I had a problem with paying him that kind of money. This gentleman says, he's preparing this for 40 hours, if you know the construction, if you ever worked with construction, first times, you will put more of that in, so that would be a little bit lower than this.
No, sir, he's acknowledged that's a flat salary of 48 hours. Initially, you'll probably put him at 60, 50, or 60, just like the mayor does, he understands that. If at some point the project slows to the point that he's operating less than 40 hours, which I hope that doesn't happen, we might give up and get it gone, then by all means, it'll be an hourly rate based on the calculations of the amount noted there.
Mr. Chairman? I have a question. You can say it. Who come up with this compensation package? Did he come up with it?
That was negotiated.
How did you determine?
Basically, that was negotiated with Mr. Ornduff at the city, he's the gentleman that took the lead on that, and I trust Mr. Ornduff, I don't have any reason not to, and again, gentlemen, who else do we have that's qualified? Now, if any of you people are qualified and you want to do it for less, then by all means, but I don't recall seeing a hammer swinging from any of your belts here as of late, and we need a qualified person. If we send somebody in there that's not qualified, then we're going to be in a world of hurt. So that's the position I think. Mr. Richard?
I got, I'm like Mr. Teschler down here, I like this salary, and then this vehicle allowance, the mobile phone allowance, and then fuel allowance, and then all that, I have a lot of problems with that, and I'd like to, let's just turn this down to nine and just advertise this, but I believe it can be done cheaper. That $1,450 a week is just a little bit too much, and I'm going to broke out.
Mr. Hodg?
I got two questions. Will the expenses of the animal shelter pay for itself instead of coming back here for us more money every year?
There's no way that I can answer that, Commissioner Hodg, we've taken the city budget, we've taken the county budget, we've meshed them. Ms. April, Ms. Ingrid has done the best that they possibly can to put together a budget that will work for this establishment. Whether or not it's adequate, I can't tell you, but I do know that based on my conversation with Ms. Jones, she's ultra-conservative, we'll do the best we can to operate as cost-effective as possible. Now, you know, my concern is this, if we delay this vote, the city is already picked apart, proven, if we delay this vote, then we're delaying the construction of this animal shelter that you folks have been so adamant to complete. And believe me, I'm not here to advocate that we spend more money than we have, and that's why I think in this case, advantageous to us to hire somebody that has the expertise to make sure this thing goes off without hitch, because neither of you will be down there on that side doing anything to assist this building construction. We need a man there five days a week, eight to 12 hours a day, whatever it takes initially to get it going and coordinate all of these contracts. Somebody that's got the qualifications to go in and oversee the undercut, the backfilling compaction, to get this slab ready for this construction.
You got a different scenario here than you have with the jail. You got Reedian Sites here at Tampa, you had the architect out of notch on the jail over there. We need the project manager, I've took a lot of flak over that, not having a project manager over there.
Mr. Ornduff?
You got Reedian Sites out here at Tampa, you can always fall back.
Right. Okay, Mr. Ornduff?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve this contract.
I second.
We have a motion to approve this contract by Mr. Von Ken. Second by Mr. Von Ken. Do we have any further discussion?
One thing, Mr. Mayor, before we go forward, I would just like to state that my view is right. This contract will come out to $82,008 per year, without with the vehicle allowance, mobile phone, computer, fuel allowance, everything that has to come out to $82,000.
Do your minutes on this, Attorney Ken.
I think I want my back, Mr. Ken.
Say it again. Voice. Mr. Blackenchip?
Under, in the contract, under B, number one, it does not identify the amount, it just says funds, and I think that we should, this should spell out the amount of money that's already been set aside in, in, uh, in the bill.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Treven, you have something?
Yes, we have $590,000 to do this, right? So that is included in his contract, uh, what we're talking about, right? So we have enough money already to pay him with $590,000.
The intent is for this man to be on a weekly basis, submit his payment to him to the city, and help make the payment directly from that camp.
Well, this is, that's our base of our plan.
It's my understanding that based on the redesign, that we shouldn't be able to do it and pay this guy. Keep in mind, at the million-two, do you think that general contractor who's charged one penny less than this probably significantly amount more, and that is factored in, because he was a general. We don't have that general contract now, and Reedian Sites is a good firm, they've approved this guy, they feel the need that he be there on the site, so to try to complete without a professional Carter County in here would be ridiculous and foolish on our part.
Mr. Ornduff, I'll be trusted, I'll give you about $70,000.
Mr. Ornduff?
I don't think there's a professional in our school system that have master's degree, doctor's degrees, that are paid $1,450 a week, plus per diem. That's a week.
Yes, a week.
You're misreading that, Mr. Ornduff.
Well, I don't think so.
Per diem is the total amount divided per week, so it's 15.
That's plus the per diem, $1,450, way out there. And I think it's ridiculous, I think someone, I think this is more than, this is entirely out of bounds. It's just a dog, and we're not building a facility for children. And another question I like to ask, the animal person, ma'am, are you a working director?
Yes, sir.
You do work?
Yes, sir.
In the shelter?
Yes.
You handle the animals, and you do work in the shelter?
I work in the shelter, I don't clean.
All you do is pay for it, mind, that is, is that correct?
At this point, yes.
You don't even answer the devil.
Oh, I will certainly do.
Let's keep our promise to the contract, Mr. Deluge?
I've been asked to clarify the compensation in the per diem, according to the contract, the compensation in Part One, under Section D compensation, $1,450, $1,450 per week, that equates to $75,400 for a year. And then it says the construction advisor shall receive additional compensation for the following at $210 per week, that equates to $10,920 a year, so a total package for a year would be $86,320.
Man, that's $500, you're responsible in this.
That did include that, sir, that's the $210 per week for per diem.
I have a couple of questions before we vote on this, if y'all will carry it, if you're allowed.
Make the motion to take it. I second that.
Now, the motion, second, take it. Look out, Robert.
Peter Peters?
Aye.
Keith Breach?
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge?
Aye.
Nancy Brown?
Aye.
Joel Street?
Aye.
Richard Wendell?
Aye.
Ronnie Treven?
Aye.
I'm sorry?
Aye.
Harry Sis?
Aye.
Charles Von Ken?
Aye.
Elsie Kestner?
Aye.
Steven Reynolds?
Aye.
Tom Bowles?
Aye.
Joy Blackenchip?
Aye.
Charlie Vegas?
I'm biased.
Tiki Rangar?
Uh.
Ian Arden?
Aye.
Steve Chang?
Aye.
John Lewis?
No.
John Y. Colder?
Aye.
Russell Cadd?
No.
Scott Sands?
No.
Bill Armstrong?
Aye.
Pat Hicks?
No.
Rob McCall?
No.
Mr. Blackenchip, would you like to change your vote?
Uh, well, I'm still biased.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion, we have ten minutes recess.
Motion for ten minutes recess.
Second.
All fair. Chairman?
Would I be able to order if I should ask that we get a committee somewhere together, I don't know who this would be to decide, walk with the page and project manager, and this all, and come to that decision, walk with these five pages, and then advertise this job?
I believe that question and answer is out of our hands, that would lie with the construction committee for the animal shelter building committee, whatever it's about. Is that right? That's the advisory committee for the Elizabeth Carter County Animal Shelter. Mr. Ornduff sits on that board, Mike Barnett, his chairman, you've got Stan Shipley with the City of Elizabeth, and Mr. David Ornduff, so the board is well represented with members of your own, and you entrusted them with the daily operations, maintenance, and handling of ongoing operations of the shelter, so why should you hold this project up to this point? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Von Ken, would you like to make a statement about this?
I know some of you, although you all looked at each other before we left the table, concerned about the salary. I'd like my motion to put this job out for bids for 10 days, stating their salaries and other expenses, to see what kind of response we'll get in relation to the one that we have here in front of us. So I make a motion that we advertise the job for the next 10 days, start as soon as possible.
Second to that motion.
Now, the motion, Mr. Von Ken, second about, Mr. color to advertise this for the next 10 days. Discussion? Discussion.
Are we gonna, we need to set the salary, what we willing to pay?
Now, again, this is out of our school authority, this is up to the animal, Animal Shelter Construction Committee? Building Committee? Building Committee. What's the best Carter County Animal Shelter Advisory Board? Advisory Board.
Well, we still need to know what you're going, when you advertise, you need to know what you're going to pay this person.
Well, that's whether we approve whatever it is that they decide to give them or not.
They can be part of the advertising, and they will tell you their salary request, and then we can look at the difference in all of that.
Well, you want to amend the motion, I think you should amend that motion to that.
Ms. Blackenchip?
Is it up to us to advertise for this, or is it up to that board to get the advertising?
You're exactly right, Ms. Blackenchip, it would be up to that advisory board to advertise, not the county commission or the City of Elizabeth, it would be the advisory board.
I think they've already decided what they want to do, it's county commission's trying to force them to do something different, so why haven't they paid for it?
Well, I don't believe we need to correct your taxpayers to pay for it. All we can, all this commission can do is to approve or disapprove the recommendation of the building committee, Animal Shelter Building Committee. So I believe that motion would be inappropriate. Attorney Bowers? Mayor, have you heard, if the Animal Shelter Advisory Board advertises for this position, and we receive resumes, we screen those, review them, and if we decide at that point in time that this candidate is the best qualified to do the job to protect the taxpayer's dollars through the construction of this shelter, then should not that committee likewise have the authority at that point in time to go ahead and enter into that contract, could that motion be amended accordingly, advertise, screen, and allow that board to go ahead and hire that person and sign that contract? Mr. Mayor, I believe the advisory committee of the animal shelter has received a message tonight that we're not willing to pay that much money for that type of job, so let them proceed accordingly with whatever they wish to pay, but when they come for us, I don't think, I think it's been shown that, that this body is not willing to pay that much money. Mr. Ornduff?
Mr. Chairman, I believe this advisory board needs to know upfront that there's conflict of interest here with this individual's stock.
Back to Mr. Ornduff.
That can be taken care of, designed.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Heaton.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All right, motion taken.
General Purpose School Fund one forty-one, budget amendment fifteen, four items, total of seventy-six thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars eighty-six cents, nothing coming from fund balance, uh, so the budget committee recommends this, and I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
And a motion by Mr. Sisk, seconded by Mr. Lewis, to approve, uh, General Purpose School Fund one forty-one, Amendment fifteen. Do I have any discussion? Call, Robert.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Ed Regging.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Harry Sis.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Kestner.
Aye.
Stephen Ray.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joy Blakenchuk.
Aye.
Charlie Vegas.
Aye.
Dickie Redrow.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Coler.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Heaton.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All right, motion taken.
General Purpose School Fund one forty-one, budget amendment fifteen, twelve items, total of two hundred and three thousand nine hundred and seventy, point seven dollars and five cents, nothing coming from fund balance. An approval of this pending the school board approval, they haven't met yet, but this needs to be taken care of this month, uh, so we need to go ahead and make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Second. And a motion by Mr. Sisk, seconded by Mr. Armstrong, to approve, uh, Carter County School, General, General Purpose School Fund one forty-one, Amendment fifteen. Any discussion? This will be subject to the passing of the same by the school. Call, Robert.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Ed Regging.
Aye.
Lawrence Hodge.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Harry Sis.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Kestner.
Aye.
Stephen Ray.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joy Blakenchuk.
Aye.
Charlie Vegas.
Aye.
Dickie Redrow.
Causing unemployed in Carter County, I have a conflict of interest in this proposal that can be voted. However, I declare them a argument and my vote only to my conscience and to my obligations to my constituents and citizens as body representatives. Aye.
Russell Cahn.
Aye.
Scott Sanders.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Peggy.
I'll make the same announcement Coach Plow has made several meetings earlier. I'm now fully retired from the school system. I have no conflict with the county. Aye.
Ron Yalvid.
Aye. I'll add motion carried.
General purpose school fund one forty-one, budget amendment fifteen, twelve items, a total of two hundred three thousand nine hundred seventy point seven dollars and five cents. Nothing coming from fund balance. An approval of this pending the school board approval, they haven't met yet, but this needs to be taken care of this month. So we need to go ahead and make a motion that we approve.
Second say. I have a motion of Mr. Shears, second by Mr. Armstrong, to approve Carter County's two general purpose school fund one forty-one, amendment fifteen. Any discussion? This will be subject to the passing of the same by the school. I'll roll with it.
Peter Stevens.
Aye.
Pete Reacher.
Aye.
Montal.
Aye.
Nancy Braylon. Joel Street.
Causing unemployed in Carter County, I have a conflict of interest in this proposal that can be voted. However, I declare them a argument and my vote only to my conscience and my obligations to my constituents and citizens as body representatives. Aye.
Russell Cahn.
Aye.
Scott Sanders.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Mary Sees.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Kestner.
Aye.
Steve Murray.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joyne Blankenship.
Aye.
Charlie Baynes.
Aye.
Dickie Reddington.
Causing unemployed in Carter County, I have a conflict of interest in this proposal that can be voted.
Ken Arden.
Causing unemployed in Carter County, I have a conflict of interest in this proposal that can be voted.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Carter.
Causing unemployed in Carter County, I have a conflict of interest in this proposal that can be voted. However, I declare them a argument and my vote only to my conscience and my obligations to my constituents and citizens as body representatives. Aye.
Russell Cahn.
Aye.
Scott Sanders.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Peggy.
Aye.
Aye. I'll add motion carried.
Budget meeting was reset and is scheduled to reconvene on June twenty-first at five fifteen here in the courtroom. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Shears. Financial manager.
We have no reported this time, or before before the end of July.
That's right. Law enforcement.
I don't know if this happened.
Jonathan Grant.
What to do with the pods? Body there, building grounds, most of the way, and we voted to bring to the full county commission to, to auction these things up, a public auction. If that's not successful, to crack them out and holler at the public source and get what we can out of it. I leave that up, if you want to do that, but I want to say this before we go any further. The day we live in that new jail, we're going to have fifteen to twenty people in it for us. If we were any tomorrow, we'd have people in it for us. I talked with the city, I know we made a agreement, I talked with the man over the, of the city, can't think of his name right now, and he said this, that he would consider the planning commission, if we would brick those things up, make it look like more like the jail, and fix the parking lot, or we would not be parking on their cabin, he would pay to the full county, or say to the planning commission, to let us do that. There's ninety-six beds, it's a cheap ninety-six beds, it's the cheapest way we can do something. Our thought is to use that for a workhouse. We'll keep trustees, member security people in, our work gangs, our people goes out and works, and, you know, that's what is a wish of this county for.
Mr. Kestner, can I say something?
Yes. I think it's foolish, I've always been against turning down the pods. I know a lot of people want to turn them down, but if you got something intact, we got to look at the future a little bit. I'm going to need a dishwasher, and then next year, next year, they'll fall off. So I think if any way possible, that we should keep these pods intact, we're going to get them out of there anyway. And if you can't have them moved, it's going to cost more room than we've got to deal with. So I don't know what's, how do you hope that'll break with the city, but if the city is in favor of them to do that.
Remember this, they didn't guarantee it, they said they considered it to do that.
I realize, but anyway, anytime you got a building, as good as your building is, and when they put them in, they said they leased like twenty years. Why try and something that you might need later? You don't know what you might need for.
So what's, right rules? Lobster. Thank you, sir.
Do we have a motion on this question?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go ahead with the Safford auction, with the best gigs that ever do auctions in the law, for every who buys a motion at their own expense. If not, I still think we need to go ahead and demolish it because contracts running out with the city at this time.
I believe that's what the recommendation, Mr. Kestner said, was the recommendation of the building the grounds committee, is that right?
Could, that is correct.
So you put that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
To the next, do I have to say?
Aye, sir.
Say it for Mr. Hart. Discussion. Mr. Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I serve on the jail information committee, we go in there every month, and there was a reason we had to build a new jail. If we look at the old jail, that's over the courtrooms and these things, Mr. Kestner's telling us just right, I haven't met with Chief Street, and I think he'll back us up, and Sheriff as well. We've seen that population increase, and we're, just like Mr. Kestner said, we're going to be full when we move in, guys. Ladies and gentlemen. Now, do we have the money to finish the top of that new jail? I think that's pretty easily answered. Do we have money to renovate the old jail? Mr. Kestner's done stated here, the cheapest operation we've got right now is the pods. The city has shown some willingness, you know, to work with us. We could possibly brick those, get maybe a wrong mountain, inmate labor to brick those things. It's going to cost us more, I think, eventually, just getting rid of it. Plus, we've not solved our problem. We go in there and we're full, what are we going to do for our old prisoners? We've got that old jail. We've got all kinds of problems, Mr. Frank, and Jim, we see all the time that it's going to have to be taken care of. So we have to look at the lesser of the two evils. I would suggest that we look at this a little bit more closely, and talk with the city before we move on this thing.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? Mr. Mayor.
Keep in mind, this is not a rushed decision. You've had days, weeks, months, and now years to make this decision. I, Attorney Bowers, said at meeting with the city when this memorandum of understanding was drafted. Now, Attorney Bowers, recall something that I don't, correct me please, okay? At no point in time were we ever given an option to leave those pods intact on that parking lot. Part of this project required that those pods be removed, and we've committed not only to removal of those pods within a certain timeframe, but paving of the remaining parking lot in order to be able to get a full certificate of occupancy. Is that not correct, Attorney Bowers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I did read an article in the paper, of course in the paper, many times it's right on, other times it's not, but the City of Elizabethan Planning Commission did meet, and at no point in time, based on that article, did they indicate that they were going to support leaving those pods. Now, I haven't talked with John Hartman myself, correct, but I'm relying solely on the information that's given to you, we entered into that memorandum of understanding. So time's running out, sand running through the hourglass, and I don't think we have an option here.
Mr. Hodge. Vice Chairman Hodge, would you step up your place here? At this time, I'm going to placate the chair, turn it over to Mr. Hodge, so I can make a statement.
Thank you. I look right here, be all right. I attended the last building the grounds committee, and I spoke about the pods. I appreciate Mr. Street's input, he's a valuable member of the jail inspection committee, as I am, as Ms. Blankenship is, as Mr. Armstrong is, as Mr. Hodge is. If I left out anything, if I have, I apologize. We visit the pods every month, and we have since they've been placed over there. And it's like they've got cancer. Every time we go in there, it's worse, and worse, and worse. We make recommendations to fix this or that, next month, it's worse, it's worse. We need to get rid of those things. They're, they're a money pit. It's like buying a boat. It's great when you first get it, and then you keep putting money into it, there's never an end. Trust me, I've been there. We've got a new jail that's already at capacity, okay? We've got an old jail, it's got almost two hundred bed capacity. Bam! If we put prisoners in there, we've got five hundred beds. We've got, that building, the old jail, has maintenance problems, yes. It's all, as long as there, it's going to have maintenance problems. If something leaks, we've got to fix it, whether there's anybody in it or not. If something breaks or tears up, we've got to fix it, whether there's anybody in there or not. It's already a certified jail. Let's cut our losses, people. Let's, let's either sell those pods, or cut them up for scrap and get rid of them, and whatever we get out of them, I don't care if it's twenty cents, at least it's money coming in. We've got to stop money going out, and get a little money coming in, no matter how much it is. There's always, well, I won't go any further, but my recommendation would be, what Mr. Trivitt's motion is, to sell the pods, if we can't sell them, then scrap them. Thank you.
Mr. Bowers, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
You see, you're going on in the inspecting pods every week of the month, and you see something more dismal. You go back next month, this ain't going to fit. Who, in your opinion, is responsible for the maintenance of the pods?
That'd be the sheriff.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Without due respect to Mr. Bowers, I asked Chief Street, he's here, I said, which one can we operate with lesser experience? In Sheriff's Office, he told me that he thought that we could do it with the pods. Now, some of the maintenance that Mr. Bowers was talking about, they had to put up a piece of sheet metal, and the prisoners rip it off the wall. But they tear it, the old jail is waiting, and we've got, we've got tons of issues up there, and I realize that it is certified, and we can continue to operate. But I asked Chief Street, and Chief Street, I asked him in front of this commission, which would be the cheapest to continuously operate? Now, if we take these things out, we've still got to pay for that parking lot. We know about the last parking lot, we don't know if we're going to have to dig down again, we don't know any of these things. So we've got tremendous costs coming at us when we move. If we get it, we're probably not going to get anything for them, but we've still got tremendous costs. So Chief Street, could you just elaborate on a little bit more, having to keep in mind, and this is an important factor, that the staff that we fought for so long about is in the new jail. You start talking about operating another jail, now the old jail, you don't have the staff figured in at what you did to do that. Now you're talking about operating two jails. The pods, if you look at that, we could probably, if we could reduce the population in the jail with no more than it takes to operate the pods, we could probably do that, absorb the majority of that. And, don't trust me, but these are the facts that you have in front of you tonight. Nobody did this two years ago, and we were putting this jail together. The numbers are nothing, your maximum number of prisoners will be allowed in that jail, unless you're overpopulated, start putting them on the floor, that got you in trouble before, and it will do it again. And you'd be surprised right now, the people that are calling us about people on the floor in jail. But you've really got three, four options I'll give you. Add space to the new jail, that's one option. Utilize the ninety-six beds that you've got in the pods, if you can retain those, and do a little work in them. Remodel the existing jail, it gives you a hundred and six beds. Mr. Bowers said two hundred, so.
No, I said almost two hundred.
You've got a hundred and six beds in the old jail. You've got two hundred and two with the old jail and the pods included. So you've got a hundred and six beds there, and you've got the option of doing nothing, but that's not a viable option, because they're going to be breathing down our neck pretty soon, because it's going to be overpopulated. One of the things that I would suggest you do, or at least consider, is have somebody come in and look at what it would cost you to refurbish, do some work in the pods, and get your ninety-six beds out of it. Have them do the same thing in the old jail, get you a cost estimate of what it would take to keep a hundred and six beds up there. And I think you know that it's not going to be cost efficient to add them to the new jail right now, I don't think, that's, that's something that you can talk about. But you could get a cost of that, what you would do, and I think you'll see that way, and then in front of the person, where you're going to get the most of your beds.
Your vice chairman.
Vice Chairman. Points, Chief's made, well taken. However, you know, when this jail was built, going back, the first time I walked in it, took the look, and realized that it was not a standalone facility, a true justice center, that had all courtrooms, offices, airspace, approved for thirty million dollars, I went away all the street and throwed them. Unfortunately, you bought it, and at some point in time, we missed that point. But bottom line is, the old jail is a permanent appendage to the new jail. We have to have it going forward. And yes, it's going to cost county taxpayers money to remodel, refurbish, and update, whether it be used for a jail, or for courtrooms and offices. The roof's all covered, right?
Yes, it is.
There's all sorts of ATAC items that we've put a Band-Aid on every other day.
It is.
I call, you understand, G, over there, Rick, whether it be condensate or water, the systems are failing, they're at the end of their lives. Folks, I wish I could wiggle my nose and make it go away, but it's not. That old jail is ours going forward, and we will at some point in time, have to get a team in here to give us a message, let's bring it up to speed, but you've got to determine what you're using, and it's the jail, the funding. But it's my understanding, again, that we don't have an option in those pods. As a firm attorney about, in our meeting with the principals of the city, we don't have an option. So why dwell on things that are not available to us?
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'd just like to respond to that, and I certainly agree with what the mayor's saying. But the one key thing that I think that you need to remember is staff. We all don't know what all these additional guards cost, they killed in County last year, it's not been only the jail, but the staff. So if we're running the old jail, Chief Street just told us that probably going to take additional staff, whereas in the pods. Now, listen, I don't like those pods any better than anyone else, but I don't, and as far as the agreement with the city, agreements were made to be broken. I don't think that the city sees that we're in, and up against the wall, that they would help us out. You can always renegotiate agreements. And I just ask that everyone take a good hard look at this before, before you vote on it. Our expert here is no choice, it's cheaper to operate and maintain the pods than it will be the old jail. Thank you.
One final thing, Mr. Vice Chairman. One thing, if you can supply the guards to, to guard fifty or seventy-five prisoners in the pods, why can't you supply that many guards to watch fifty or seventy-five in the old jail? And just, and the second point is, is it cheaper to keep up the maintenance on two buildings, or one building? Just, I ask you to consider that. Thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Trivitt, may I?
Mr. Gollum. Mr. Gollum.
Mr. Vice, I'd like to ask Chief a question.
Go ahead.
Chief, if we didn't keep those pods for work finished, how many people are gone work finished right now?
There was about sixty-five the last time I checked, which was about a week ago. Worker leagues, trustee, that work in our facility, work in the land deal, all of the community.
With those out of this new jail, what is your situation being far, being thin?
Well, we'd be in great shape, then, we'd have sixty-five available beds, I mean, you know, for the population. And I'm opposed to this, I probably shouldn't, but I believe, I hear all of these figures, high number of dollars about how much it's going to cost if we had to move the pods, and that's one of the options that everybody's talking about, if they have to be moved to another county. As a result of one of the articles that was in the paper, a guy came to see me, I've not checked his credentials out or anything, about to lose the pods, he wanted to look at it. And his figures, I hear a hundred thousand dollars, for his figures to move the pod, really could be close to a hundred twenty thousand dollars. So I heard a hundred thousand, but this guy actually visited the pods and looked at them, I took a hand look at them. And whether he could do it or not, I've not checked that to see, but his company.
Question on the motion.
Chief.
Do we have two more?
What are we looking at if we break this agreement that we've already signed? That's why we've got this evidence over here.
The agreement with the city, is that okay, Vice Chairman? The agreement with the city provided six months to complete a list of around five, six items. And I believe, through law enforcement, all the other items either been completed or assigned an individual, and the pods of the last, obviously, large, and the last remaining item to determine. The agreement was entered into to allow quicker and expedited stipend of occupancy for the jail, was one of the underlying factors in negotiations. At this point, if you breach the PS, if you breach that, you really need to be ready to let me sue the city, before they sue us. In my opinion, and let me praise that, because that works, raises air that I'm not trying to raise, you need to have declaratory judgment determine if they could then force us to move them or not, and every, we need to get in front of the chancellor and have a determination.
We'll have one more to vote on.
Mr. Jerry, I've got a question for Chief. Mr. Street, how many prisoners in that jail are parole violated?
I have not looked at those numbers, but I can't. Forty-seven percent. That, that right there is what's breaking our back, is the parole violation.
I agree.
And we have got state parole officers, we've got a problem with crossroads. Every time you turn around, get about three or four days being done with the parole, they'll give them the violating parole.
Mr. Jerry, there not been any parole violators? I think you're talking about proleash.
Yeah, I'm.
There's a difference.
Okay, I'm talking about the proleash.
Now, if we do like Mr. Hartman talked about a few weeks ago, we could get, clear all them out of the jail, on, put these braces on, and, and get them out of jail, it wouldn't be this rapid, it wouldn't be so. But if you move these prisoners out of the pods, out of the old jail, into the new jail, what happened? What got us in this shape to start with? Was crowded in an old jail. You take the prisoner out of the old jail, put him in the new jail, and then you go and bring one in here, what you will have? You will have discrimination, so, I live in a new jail, I got the pod, or I got in the old jail. So, I think we need to work on getting our own county parole officers, and we can do our own parole, and our jail wasn't doing here, it's supposed to.
Right now, we're going to go.
Okay.
I've got the air.
I have one more thing to say. We've got the time is provided now on these pods. And now, it's talking about keeping three buildings, the pods, the old jail and the new jail. It's just a money pit, the only part of money in those pods, they're about ten-year-olds, they're getting in bad shape. So I think you need to not spend any more money on these pods.
Well, the motion was made, and following motion was a discussion by Ken Arden, Secretary of Ron Trivitt, to hold an absolute auction, to sell the pods, with the buyer agreed to the rules, the sale as set forth, and subject to confirmation, terms as prepared by the approved of the county attorney, Keith Burns Junior. And if the sale is unsuccessful, then to dismantle them, and they are being done by the county president, using rented equipment, is necessary for sale to scrap, to leave going into the fund balance. That's the motion. So right now, we'll have a question on motion. Call her up.
Mr. Trivitt.
Aye.
Pete Reacher.
Aye.
Montal.
Aye.
Nancy Braylon.
Aye.
Joel Street.
No.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trivitt.
Aye.
Mary Sees.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
No.
Elsie Kestner.
No.
Steve Murray.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joyne Blankenship.
Aye.
Charlie Baynes.
No.
Dickie Reddington.
Aye.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
No.
Sonya Carter.
Aye.
Russell Cahn.
Aye.
Scott Sanders.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
No.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
18-6. Men for the.
Turn back and vote. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. How it been?
meeting. We had the, Mr. John Lewis requested that he... We had the, uh, Mr. John Lewis requesting that the new bridge up in Elkville be named the E.C. Miller Bridge. And E.C. was well-known and throughout the country. And the Highway Committee voted one-hundred percent for me to bring it, present it to you, that I put the form of motion, name that bridge, E.C. Miller.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ritchie, second by Mr. Sands, to name the bridge, E.C. Miller Bridge. Have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Who cares?
Then we have another bridge, then Mr. Richard Winters, Wrong Mountain, that, uh, he has petitions named on it. And he, uh, come forward to Highway Committee requesting that the bridge up in Wrong Mountain on Highway one forty-three, Wrong Mountain State Park, Picnic Shelter, be named, uh, the Carol Boone Bridge. And, uh, so we've, uh, had two of the Wrong Mountain commissioners present to me. Sir, uh, Mr. Winters was there, and, uh, Mr. Hicks was out. So Mr. Uh, Winters sat in for him, so voted to bring it to you, present it to you, to name that bridge at, uh, Highway one forty-three, Carol Boone Bridge. And I put that form of motion.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Ritchie, second by Mr. Winters, to rename the bridge you know about. What was that name again?
The Carol Boone Bridge.
Carol Boone Bridge.
He worked with Tennessee Highway, uh, I mean Tennessee Park Transportation for years.
Discussion, Mr. Brand.
Okay. I have a petition here that's thought of five-hundred-and-thirty-six residents in Wrong Mountain that know nothing about this bridge would be named at that point in time. And they're asking that that same bridge be named after Jack Barnett, who lived within a half mile, would you say?
About two miles.
Two miles from that bridge. His son is here. And they're, even the park, the man over the park has come to me, asked me to do what I can because he felt like that it really needed to be named after him.
Thank you, Ms. Brand. Any other discussion, Mr. Black?
Is there any reason why we couldn't name it with both names on that bridge?
Well, there's a solution. There's another bridge right there close by that could be named. I've been talking, Mr. Winters, you're from up in that territory, Mr. Street, uh, there's another bridge right there in the same park, isn't it?
Mr. Chairman, just, go ahead and explain it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there was no attempt on anybody's part to preempt the name of Mr. Barnett. I have Rick expect from Mr. Barnett, and I've known him all the years, he's given him that. Uh, I had no inclination that he would be interested, or his family would be interested in naming this bridge after him. If I had, I would certainly have pursued that and given the people a voice and speak. As far as getting the word out, the word came out in the paper, and I guess that was the first time that the public, the people at the time knew about it, but I had about a hundred and forty signatures on petitions that were circulating, and several leaders in the community did circulate those petitions. As far as Mr. Boone's character and service, it's excellent. He does deserve an honor. Uh, I have no hesitancy in saying that Mr. Barnett deserves an honor. I would certainly be agreeable to a joint naming. I would certainly be agreeable to naming a second bridge. There are other bridges, there's one I believe in front of the Barnett store going up the Amoco. There are several bridges on the Amoco Road around through there. But I do not see any reason why this could not be amicably settled by honoring both men. And I suggest that as a possible alternative.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Ms. Brand.
I would ask that the one on one forty-three be named after Mr. Barnett.
Is this the same one?
This is the same bridge.
How about a joint naming?
Yes, sir, would ask not.
Can I say that? Uh, no, sure. May not. Uh, well, we, we have a, a motion to amend this to have a joint naming of this bridge. Send, uh, any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second.
Could I ask that this get referred back to the Highway Department to do work before it's come to decision? To do more research?
If that's agreeable with the chairman of the Highway Committee?
I have no, I have no problem with it. I mean, I, I've got to do, I'm the chairman of the Highway Committee, and they voted one-hundred percent for me to bring it to you and present it, uh, as a motion to be named Carol Boone Bridge. Uh, it's up to the, whatever they want.
Mr. Street. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm also a second district commissioner, and, uh, we wasn't aware of, of Mr. Barnett's family, you know, wanting this. So, uh, I would suggest that we do take it back to the Highway Committee and work this out where we can, uh, appease, uh, all parties.
Mr. Street, will you put that forward?
I will.
We have a motion to amend this and send it back to the Highway Committee. Any other discussion?
Chairman, you have two motions on the floor. You can treat those as a motion to table.
I, uh, where we, I made the motion to name the bridge. I, can I'm in mind, we, we take it back, uh, let it come back to the Highway Committee?
Well, we have two motions on the floor. However, I believe that that motion.
You could treat, if, if both parties agreeable, treat the second motion as a motion to table, referring specifically back to that committee now.
Very well.
Both as a table, may they.
If y'all understand this, we have two motions on the floor, and we could treat the second motion as a motion to table and send back to the Highway Committee. If that's agreeable to you all.
A motion, a motion, a motion to refer it back to a committee is always in order. Doesn't, you can have those two.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. So, all in favor, send it back to the Highway Committee, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Who cares?
Okay. I got one more little piece here that I want to put through. There've been so many people coming forward to Highway Committee, wanting to change speed limits, and on the road, my son, and putting speed bumps, this was brought up by Mr. John Lewis and the same thing, Mr. Roy Levis, his folks, coming about putting in speed bumps. So, uh, the motion was made by the same gloves, Secretary Dean Purry, recommendation of the Highway Committee to replace, replace no speed bumps on county roads by a vote. Motion carried on December the tenth, nineteen ninety. So that, uh, Mr. Perkins always said he couldn't put no speed bumps in. And I want to put that to rest right there. So there'd be no speed bumps in Carter County, despite nineteen ninety.
Let me get this to Rich. All righty. Uh, Land Hill Committee.
It hasn't been, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Room bylaw.
I don't have anything I can say.
Thank you, Mr. Education Committee.
Uh, politician.
Thank you. Health and Welfare. Thank you. Anybody I've missed, can you please help me? Thank you. Uh, now we have a candidate.
Just to give a quick update on several issues we've been facing this month. Correspondents have been advancing all county commissioners, we've seen this a couple of days, concerning the velocity matter, and the matter of arrest. Sessions Court, I've seen a copy of that commission, velocity county matter, why I didn't regard that, and I'm not going to follow the court, I just want to, I ask the community to act, and that's the policy under term for our privilege due to potential litigation. In direction to the mayor, we looked into ADA policy, as well as ADA agreements policy of the county. I drafted the same, we submit that to committee before it comes up this next month. Part of that, we have to appoint an ADA coordinator of the county. This is a non-paid position, this person is the initial gateway for ADA complaint. We have an ADA committee, we've never had a complaint as long as I've been around, so we're okay as far as compliance. There's some things as far as statute of agreements policy, as well as giving proper notes, we want to make sure we stay in compliance with the ADA law. Complex piece of law, several leads, but, but so far we've not had any problems. Completed some research with the new animal shelter director this month, concerns cage issues that's been advanced. We concluded the property donation, uh, from Dr. Covet's approved by the full commission last month. Last month, we completed that with Attorney Dave Bush, who has been recording the county. The red agent fee agreement pursuant to vote last month was advanced. Uh, fee stock agreements and initial correspondence are later, but can't, but advanced on that with the county as well. Quite a bit of work within this month, I'm preparing the trustees resolution, make sure that we actually tailor it to be something that would fit our county, and not just a little freight. Uh, Mr. Lewis has already left, and that quite a bit of work as far as proceeding his rules and staying in that real well. The criminal summons, this is, we're with Commissioner, the new senior, actually, I'm not finding people to do it. Commissioner Tester, those have been put in place by the clerk's office, approved by the judge, and they're actually being used now. And Commissioner Tester found some things on that summons that we were doing, and probably on compliance with TCA, and we are now. And I thank him for granting our attention, something fixed and moving forward. We had a, a judgment issue up with the Highway Department, I filed a response on that. I don't see Paul taking care of this month in front of a necessary judge. I see that matter was set for hearing, um, oral motion in July. Uh, we've been working with Mr. Schuler's office and with the attorney for the insurance carrier as far as stipulations and the pre-trial motions out of files our insurance carrier does. That's in review, make sure we're with Schuler. Due to the Jones, Chancellor Johnson, that matter will have to continue the next time of court. Uh, he's continued everything for. August first, is this Melissa, am I correct? Through August first, so we'll get a new court date, uh, following the file document for that. Take care of that over the time. Have a meeting set up next month, the mayor's got some papers, might be able to say something on my opposite calls. We've got a meeting set up next week with the district attorney general, the mayor's office stuff, and we might be moving forward on behalf of the county. We did complete our necessary class action lawsuit, uh, documentation, that was advanced Attorney Sears. We've been adding as a plaintiff in that lawsuit, no objections at this point. Quite a, quite a bit of work within this month, the animal shelter provides a contract. Uh, the initial document prepared was an AIA contract, we didn't have a license for that contract, so I had to draft one, uh, from scratch, for lack of a better term. The ADA cost to get that packet of contracts, it's really, uh, it's cost prohibitive, it's in the three, four thousand dollar range to get the license and agreements to, to use AIA documents. We could purchase some individual contracts, but this unfortunately is not a contract that's valid for purchase on an individual license basis. So we distracted around, it took a little more time, but it's a significant cost savings to the county. And other than day-to-day questions, operations, that's, that's what I work on this month. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Shall we come to a couple of comments? And if anyone wishes to speak, show your comments. Same there, and go to commission comments. Mr. Bob Kim.
The first thing I'd like to say is that several of us are here, came to a man. And, uh, I would think that, uh, there ought to be some way that, uh, that even with hearing aids, that we be given some seating arrangement or something to where we can hear a little better. Because I never heard a table motion. Because it looked, uh, made, made several of us look pretty idiotic to, uh, say one thing and then immediately go against it, doesn't make sense. Mr. Kevin Ward is with us. I have some numbers and some questions, even though th- this is probably going to be discussed in budget, but I think the public needs to hear his version of, not his version, his numbers on. We saw where apparently there's fifty or fifty-one teachers beyond the basic education program, BDP. Would you care to comment, Kevin, on, on, does this fit, these numbers, fifty people?
Excuse me just a minute. I believe that this question, uh, has been discussed quite a bit at length. And if any further questions on this same subject, please to go before the school board, not the county commission. Thank you, Mr. Bob.
I think it's of such interest, Mr. Chairman, that the public needs to know a little more than they're going to know through a, uh, committee meeting.
Not if they go to the school board, we can ask these questions, so the school board, not the county commission.
In other words, I'm out of order.
That's one way to put it, yes, thank you. You're welcome to speak on anything else.
Thank you for, I try and.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry.
I'll say.
I'll say.